Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone for coming to this very important meeting of the City Council as we do the people's work. And council members at this time, if you would, please stand for the invocation that will be given by Reverend Canon Frederick Walker, the new rector at St. James Episcopal Church here in Portsmouth. And then please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Pastor, good afternoon.
From the book of Pope Samuel, chapter 16, verse 12, read thus: So he sent and had him brought in; he was rude, with a fond appearance, and had some features. Then the Lord said, Rise and anoint him; he is Thee One. Mayor, members of the City Council of the City of Portsmouth, you are not only elected officials of this city, but you are chosen instruments, thus says the Lord. The people and our citizenry of Portsmouth are at your service for said instrument of leadership. I ask your divine indulgence as I read the prayer of St. Francis. Lord, make us instruments of Your peace; whether it is hatred, let us so love; whether it is injury, pardon; whether it is discord, union; whether it is doubt, faith; whether it is despair, hope; whether it is darkness, light; whether it is sadness, joy. Grant that we may not so might seek to be consoled as to console, so to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love; for it is in giving that we receive; it is in pardoning that we are pardoned; it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. Let us bow at our heads. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon these, Your people whom You have entrusted, Your authority of leadership within the city of Portsmouth and all those who are their subjects. We ask a prayers for the mayor, the vice mayor, and all members of the council. We ask the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that will step up purpose and may faithfully serve in these offices to promote the well-being of all people. All this we pray you through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
[inaudible] 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 [inaudible]
Reverend Walker, before you leave, sir, and we want to thank you for that gracious and wonderful prayer. Again, I want to welcome you to our city. Come back up if you would. I had the pleasure about a month ago of attending St. James and officially welcoming the pastor and his great family to the city of Portsmouth and reading over your bio and all of the works that you've done throughout the world. And the kingdom-building process is truly impressive. And I was most impressed of some of the troubling times that you encountered over, and I believe in Liberia and Ivory Coast and on the western shores of Africa and some of those trying times and how you really understand what faith is and means in times of some of those difficulties. And I was very impressed with that. I was also impressed with your conversation and reading and meeting your family and your beautiful kids. So, welcome to Portsmouth, sir. Anything you want to share with us before you take your seat? Anything about the St. James Episcopal Church? You know, we had interim there, Father Joseph Green, who is, we call him an icon in this area here. Father Green is vice mayor, former vice mayor of Norfolk and the Grace Episcopal Church in Norfolk, and he has pinch-hit here several times at St. James. And so, you're filling some tall shoes, sir. And Father John Abaje, I believe he left here and went to Cincinnati, and he was here for about 10 years. So, not to scare you or put any pressure on you, but you're following some great men. Anything you want to add before you leave?
I'd just like to say thanks to you, mayor, and members of your council for the invitation extended me to bring this invocation to all of you. I think you have said it all. I just don't serve St. James alone on a Sunday. I do two churches on any given Sunday. And people ask me, Frederick, how you do it? And I say to them, once you are healthy and have the energy, and God has blessed you, use it for His ministry. And so, I am the rector for St. Mark's in Suffolk, St. Mark's Episcopal Church. I do a nine o'clock service there. And then I commute to Portsmouth and do an 11:30 service at St. James. I have been living in Portsmouth for over six years, just so members of the council get it straight. And so, I have been paying my tithes for the city.
That's always good, sir.
Yeah. And you may not have seen me at any of your gatherings, but you bet I follow all of you online. I have seen all of you photos online. So even before I came, I knew you, as God would say to Jeremiah, I formed you in the better before you were even born. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, sir. Have a blessed evening, and thanks for coming. All right, members of City Council, if you would, please indicate your presence electronically.
Seven members of City Council present.
Okay. Members of City Council, you have before your consideration the minutes of a call meeting of September 22, 2015, and a regular meeting of September 22, 2015. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
[inaudible]
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. The minutes are adopted, seven zero.
Okay, very good. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, Mayor Wright will move down front for a special And at this time, as he goes down front, we'd like to ask the Woodrow Wilson High School football team to please come forward. Let's give them a nice little round of applause, everybody.
Now, I want you guys to know it is rare, if you would, you can go all the way back up against us so we make sure we get you all on television. It is rare that we do a recognition during the season. Normally, it's after the season. There's been accomplishments that we're all proud of. And, but you guys have kind of got out of the box early and done some things that's brought a great deal of pride and recognition to our city. We had our first Buffalo Wildwing Player of the Region. Where is he at, Mr. Devon? Where is Mr. Devon? All right, step up here. That's right, give him a hand. Now, what did you do to do that? I understand you intercepted the ball and you ran it in for a touchdown. Is that all you did?
Yes.
Yes, all you did, okay. That was a game-winning touchdown, is that right? All right, what grade are you in, Devon?
12.
12th grade, okay, very good. And then, we were also pleased the following week to have, where's the young lady? Where's Cynthia? All right, come on up here. That's right, Ms. Brown here to be, now, let's get it right, the first female to throw for a touchdown? Is that correct?
In Virginia, yes.
In Virginia, that's right. Let's get it. Coach, you need to get over here. I've got a script I need to read. But again, you guys have made us proud. We understand the rich history of the Woodrow Wilson High School Presidents, all of the state championships, all of the great players from Kenny Wright to Ace Parker, to Bill Skeeter, to Jimmy Williams, to Kenny Wright, to Larry Stewart, Carlton Nelson, Aaron Sparrow. So you guys are falling in some big footsteps here. And I understand we've had some tough times, and we hired us a new coach here a year ago, correct? And this coach, and let me share with you, and I want you to know, I was lobbying for you for that job. You know where I did it at? In church. Your principal was at Ebenezer one afternoon, and I saw your post on Facebook, and I felt your passion for these kids and how you really wanted this job because you wanted to make a difference. And that made a difference to me. And I shared that with your principal. And I hope, I guess he went back and read it. But let me tell you, whether we're winning or losing, it's about how you play the game. It's about how we conduct ourselves as citizens and learn to work as a team and accomplish things together. And you have done a phenomenal job, Coach, with doing that thus far. As a president myself and as a conqueror of, you know, we had some other schools. We had a Craddock High School that once existed here, and they were out on the street, and we brought them into Wilsonfold. Then we had a Manor High School. Manor High School, they were out on the street, and we brought them into the fold. So, we're a loving group here, these Wilson Presidents, and we got a couple of Manor graduates. Dr. Whitaker is back there, and Mr. Meeks here is an Abro, Craddock Abro. But it's all in good. But we want to thank you guys for what you're doing and what you're going to do and the great work that you're doing, Coach. Again, it means a great deal to us. Now, let me read the script. This is what I was told to do. When you become mayor, do what you're told, okay? All right, come out and show your support. Now, this came right off lunch. Come out and show your support for the Woodrow Wilson High School Football Team. They have played together as a team that has opened doors for them. Marcus Devon, who has won the Buffalo Wildwing Player of the Week for a 60-yard interception and touchdown to win the game, followed by Cynthia Brown being the first female to throw a touchdown in Virginia. The same play featured Kevin Whitfield. Where's Kevin? Come on, step up, son. All right. The same play, oh, you got a little extra there. What's that? All right. The same play featured Kevin Whitfield being highlighted for his awesome run for the "I will not be denied" touchdown. I wish I was done, but I'm not. That is followed by Cynthia Brown, it's her again, kicking three field goals to win the game against Granby High School. Is that a record for you, three in one game? Absolutely, give it up again. Now, that game placed her as a nominee for the Buffalo Wild Wings Player of the Week. Yes, she won. That's right. We've had two Buffalo Wild Wing Players of the Week right here in the city of Portsmouth, right here at Woodrow Wilson High School. So, guys, again, we want to thank you, and those were done in consecutive weeks. We want to thank you for what you're doing, but more importantly, please enjoy the journey, the things you're learning as a team, the wins, the losses, they all have meaning. And at the end of your journey, you'll be able to look back at all of these things and put them together collectively to make you a better person as you go on to wherever it is you're going. Now, I had a chance to meet you and your parents last year at the sports club. You were recognized at the annual dinner, and I think you shared with me that you're going to play soccer. Where are you going? Radford University, she's going to play soccer. Okay, good job. All right, before we wrap this up, this was all done, we've got a vice mayor here that happens to be a woman. And she mentioned, wouldn't it be nice, mayor, to bring these folks in and bring that young lady up? So I want to ask our vice mayor, she would join us down here. And Coach, I want to give you a minute, I want to give you a minute to make some comments, if you would.
All right. Well, we would like to thank everybody. We'd like to thank the mayor, the City Council, everyone for having us here today. These young men and this young lady, they work hard every week. They work hard in school academically, they work hard on the field, and they work hard off the field to have good character so that they can be a part of this team. And I'm proud to be their coach. I'm proud to be, you know, coaching in the city of Portsmouth where I was born and raised. I'm proud to coach every last one of them. They're good young men and a good young lady, and they work very hard, and they're going to continue to work hard. Like you said, win or lose. We're three and three right now, it's a long season, but they're doing what they have to do to be successful. And one thing that we're very proud of is that they're doing very well with their academics, and we're working hard to get scholarships. We had one of our players just recently get offered a full ride to Lenoir-Ryan University in Charlotte, North Carolina. So we're happy about that. We just want to say that this team, just like the other high schools in Portsmouth, this team is filled with young people in our city that are going to make it, that are going to be great, that we have to as adults. And everything that we do, when we leave, remember to invest in them because they are our future. They are going to be the ones that are going to make a difference and make an impact. So every decision that we make as a City Council, as a mayor, and as a community, let's remember these young people. Let's remember that they are diverse young people, they come together every week. Now, they don't all like each other, but on Friday, they come together to make something happen. So the City Council and the mayor may not like each other, but they can come together and make something happen for this city. You all may not like each other, but you can come together and make something happen for this city. All right, so, we thank you all.
All right. Well done, well done, Ronnie. I mean, you come from a great family of people that give back in our community and do great work, and that was a great comment. But Cynthia, we've got a saying here, you know, we just hired a city manager. You know what that is? That's the person that runs the city. All right, and she's sitting right back there. I say she, see that? That is the first woman in 263-year history. All right. So we've got a saying here on council that if you want to get it done right, give the job to a woman to do. So, as we close out, I'm going to give the job to a woman, our vice mayor, to give us some closing comments, and then we'll take our seats. Vice mayor.
Thank you, mayor. And to all of the team, I don't want to stand in front of you. It certainly is Cynthia Brown that came to my attention. And most of you here know I will always be the driving force behind making strong women even stronger. But what's important, and Coach, you said it, is that you all, all of you, brought national attention to this city in a very fine way. At a time when the City Council's fussing and fuming and terrible things are happening all over the country, particularly to young African-American men, you all brought wonderful national attention to this city in a great way. And we wanted to applaud that. I don't care if you ever win another football game, but you've done such a good job, even though I saw you last week beat the pants off of Norcom. But anyway.
All right, thank you all very much. They're going to actually exit out instead of going to their seats. I know you've got school tomorrow, and good luck this weekend. Thanks again, Coach. Appreciate it, guys. We love the great work. All right. Congratulations. Good luck. They were on the street. We brought, that's why. I really enjoyed reading. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. That's hard to follow.
That's hard to follow, yes it is.
City Council rules require a limit of up to three minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your three minutes, you will see a green light. Two minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of three minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments. City managers report. 15-357, adoption of an ordinance to appropriate $28,750.45 in the FY 2015-16 general fund from the unassigned fund balance of the general fund for used by the Department of Libraries for the Universal Service Schools and Libraries Program. Vision Principal, Lifelong Learning Community, electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move for adoption. Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically.
Very good.
This item is adopted seven zero. 15-358, adoption of an ordinance accepting funding from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services in the amount of $50,000 and appropriating said amount in the FY 2015-16 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund for the purpose of funding a crisis intervention team peer support position. Vision Principal, Neighborhoods and Sense of Community, electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Adoption. Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. 15-359, adoption of an ordinance accepting funding from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services in the amount of $33,622 and appropriating said amount in the FY 2015-16 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund for the purpose of funding cost of living adjustments. Vision Principal, Neighborhoods and Sense of Community, electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move for adoption.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. 15-360, boards and commissions. Councilman Edmonds, we don't have any this evening?
No, not this evening.
Okay, thank you. 15-361, items submitted by council members, and the first item, adoption of a resolution confirming a declaration of local emergency due to severe weather and the threat of hurricane Jaquan impacting Portsmouth, Virginia. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move for adoption. Second.
All right, vice mayor? Did you hit your own?
No, I didn't. I think for the purposes of the public, could we ask the manager to explain what this is?
Sure.
The point of it?
Yeah. Madam Manager?
Yes. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, this declaration of local emergency was enacted on the morning of September 29, when we were in the midst of a hurricane at that time that appeared as if it was hitting right toward the Virginia coast. Once the state determines that the condition is imminent and cities should prepare through declaring a declaration of local emergency, that morning, we put this in place, although we have to have the declaration adopted or accepted by the council, we put it in place. Now, this is the exception. We will make, or we have made, a report to the state of what kinds of damages that have occurred as a result of the nor'easter that affected us, which tied over, as, there were two different storms that tied over, so we're looking to get some refund from the state based on what the assessments are. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Dr. Edmonds?
No.
Oh, not now, let us get this and then I'll recognize you. Madam Clerk?
We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero.
Okay, very good. Dr. Edmonds?
Thank you, mayor. Mayor and members of council, I move that we add an item to the agenda pertaining to the appointment of city attorney.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero.
Okay, Dr. Edmonds?
Mayor and members of City Council, I move to appoint Solomon H. Ashby Jr. as City Attorney of the City of Portsmouth effective November 1, 2015, and that the mayor, acting for and on behalf of the City Council of the City of Portsmouth, is authorized and directed to sign an employment contract which will be distributed in connection with this motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're still on the items submitted by council. Let me, I'm going to go to the vice mayor, and as she's speaking, I want to make sure we queue up the slides for the economic development summary that we just covered in the work session. There was a request by one of the council members, Dr. Edmonds, that we make this public to everyone, so we will do that. So if you would queue up the slide as defer to the vice mayor.
Thank you, sir. Two items. One, I think is important to say publicly that I just wanted to publicly thank another strong woman in this community, Sharon Cordell, who stepped up to the plate to be interim city attorney for the last few months. She's done an outstanding job, and for the record, she did not apply to be our attorney, our permanent city attorney. And I think that's important for the public to understand. But Ms. Cordell, thank you for doing a super job, and we look forward to your continued stay here.
Absolutely.
Number one. Number two, on a completely different note and a sad note to many citizens in the community, our former judge, Robert Bab, who served in the J and D Court and Circuit Court in the city for more than 40 years, passed away day before yesterday unexpectedly in his home, and his funeral services will be this Thursday at 1:00 p.m. at Churchill and Baptist Church.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Cherry?
Thank you, mayor. Mayor, as you know, I got the privilege of representing the city last week at the Virginia Municipal League Conference and the Virginia First Cities Meeting. And I would tell you that, you know, they are focusing on a lot of things that are important to us in the city of Portsmouth, you know, trying to get more money for preschool initiatives. I see some school board members out there, I'm sure they'd be happy about that. Teacher improvement incentive grants. They're also working on something for the Community Wealth Building Fund, establish support local localities that have a poverty rate of 20% or more. But the highlight of the week for me, mayor, was I got to attend in the banquet where the city of Portsmouth was recognized as a Virginia Municipal League 2015 Achievement Award in local government and for the City of Portsmouth Area Report Card. And this project, the city of Portsmouth created a quantifiable, data-driven method to assess costs for many types of city services from fire to EMS to waste management to city assessment, and using this data to identify the parts of the city that need the most attention in that particular time. So, and this was for all cities in the city and the state of Virginia with populations of over 90,000. So, out of all the cities, Portsmouth got this award. So I think it's something to be proud of. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, council. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Cherry. And to piggyback on that, which kind of segues into these next couple of slides that we want to show you, and he mentioned our school system. We got a school board member here. I see a member, Costella Williams, in the audience. I see a fine principal there, Hodges Manor, Dr. Fay Felton. How are you? This is, and do we have school board member Ted Lamb? Oh, Ted Lamb, welcome. This is, again, part of our overall grand plan of coming together as a city working. We, these awards that VML and these people recognize throughout the state, it's not some "it's your turn" or "somebody pulled a name out of a hat." People are recognizing the great things that we're doing here in our city. I was also pleased to read that our graduation rates and dropout rates had improved. I think if you looked at the data, we were somewhere around last in the state, and now we're thirty out of 131 or something. That is a vast improvement. Shows, that's right. Shows the great work that our teachers and faculty and staff are doing and the administration, working together along with council, working with our school system. It was requested by Dr. Edmonds that we give you just a brief highlight on some of the economic development, things that are occurring here in our city. We went through this in detail in our work session, and as we all know, we've got to tell our story. We can't allow other people to tell it because it's not going to be told the way it should be. These type of things we're talking here, you won't see on television. You won't see in the paper without some type of slant or type of agenda. So I asked them to put up just a couple of the highlighted slides. These are economic development projects that are going on in just our downtown area. We've got three developers. We've got eight different developments that are going on downtown that will bring us 770 multifamily units. Okay? That equates to almost $100 million in private investment in our city. That's just downtown. Next slide clear. Kia? And this was the whole one. Then in our midtown, we got, you can see there the summary of what's going on here in our midtown. Let me get to my slide here. In our retail corridor, $37.1 million in private capital investment. You know about the midtown corridor that we're developing, the Chick-fil-A? We see the owners here. We're glad to see Mr. and Mrs. Peterson here from the famous Chick-fil-A. As you know, that anchor and that leg started with the Walmart years ago, and then based on that, you know, we were able to grow and bring in a lot of other pieces, the Chick-fil-A piece, and now we've done the Kroger piece. We've added some of the other retail pieces in there, as well as Auto-Bell. That investment is under construction, the $1.1 million. So that whole midtown piece, and we just did the grand opening of the Wawa, which is about four and a half million dollar investment in August of 2015. And so, again, and that's the midtown corridor. Now we're going to switch over to Victory Corridor. The Victory Corridor, in summary, fifteen and a half to eighteen and a half million dollars in private investment. Again, we've got two 7-Elevens that are coming up in the Cavalier Manor area on Greenwood and Cavalier Boulevard, as well as Greenwood and Victory Boulevard. And there, one of them already, well, both of them now should be open, I believe. I know the one on Cavalier, and they're both open now, yeah. And then the Autumn Care, there's a proposed expansion there, a nursing and rehab facility relocating and expanding from the West Haven area, and that's a 12 to 15 million dollar estimate. Again, private investment money coming into this city. And then lastly, in our Greenwood slash Elmhurst Lane Corridor, about $6.3 million in private investment. Control Conditions Corporation is a commercial HVAC company, 17,522 square feet. That's about a $1.3 million investment, and that's open. And we just announced the Interchange, the third-party logistics firm and distribution facility. That's going to be at the former Gualtney Plant. Thirteen acres, 200,000 square foot, new construction, and that's about a $5 million investment. They're going to start the demolition here in the fourth quarter of 2015, and construction of Phase One is expected in the fourth quarter of 2016. Again, we put these slides up and these things for you here and for the public home to see some of the things that we're doing here in our economic development arm that works in conjunction with our administration and our management here of the city, as well as our school systems, because all of these things have to work in unis, so they play off of each other. So we're able to invest in recreation facilities and other quality of life issues that we need in our community. We all are aware of all of the needs. Every one of you civic leaders that I'm looking at here, you all have something in your neighborhood that you like. If it's nothing, then cleaning a ditch, or doing a drainage, or adding a fire station, or a rec center, or doing some type of improvement, we've got all of those things that we have to contend with. And in order for us to do those things, we've got to be prudent when it comes to the economic development piece. And finally, there, you see there on the Paradise Creek Corridor, the P R, P E R property that's been done there. That's an investment of up north of $3 million, 16 acres. And the Vane Brothers Company is providing multiple maritime services to include a fleet of tugs and barges. They're adding 15,000 square feet to expand their office space. Again, that's all revenue that we're generating to bring into this city to be able to reprogram and divert to some of these other areas. Now, one of the tough things that we all have to deal with, not just in the City of Portsmouth, but localities all over this country, the cost of doing business continue to rise. So whether we add or build or do anything, our cost of doing business is going to increase, whether it's through promotions, raises, all of those types of things. Just debt service, all of those types of things. So it's incumbent upon us as a council to make those type of prudent decisions to not only to be able to handle those escalating costs going in the out years for things that we've invested in, but also to invest in some of these other things that we're doing here. And when things like a parks and rec initiative come about, when things like a building next door for our police come about, we have to be prudent and take advantage of those opportunities because they will pay off in the long run. So I want to thank our economic development, and Dr. Patton, I want to thank you and your team for putting this. This is going to be a series of these. So if you don't come to our work session, we'd like for you to at least watch it on television. This was just Phase One of three different phases that Mallory Butler, our economic director, is going to walk us through. We've got a lot of vacant land that we're still working to be able to market, and we've got some other futuristic things that we're working on. That's all part of the grand plan that we're working on, and we want to make sure you, the public, knew what we were doing. It's just unfortunate sometimes we read things and it's all taken out of context or written in a way to give a certain slant. And that's not fair to not only us as a council, but it's not fair to you as a citizen who are paying taxes and watching these types of things occur. So kudos to our schools with those graduation rates. Kudos to this council for working together, make sure they have proper funding. Kudos to our administration for all of these awards and things that we're doing. And let's keep this investment piece going, and there are greater things ahead here for this city. So with that, Madam Clerk? Dr. Edmonds, how did I do?
You did great.
Okay, thank you.
Fifteen dash three sixty-two, report on pending items, and we have none this evening. Fifteen dash three sixty-three, non-agenda speakers. Our first speaker is Mr. Clyde Toler.
Electoral officials, city managers, city attorney. Good sign. No, I see somebody sitting there. Anyway, Clyde Toler, Blair Street, Portsmouth, Virginia, 1000 block of Blair Street. I come before you tonight about senior citizen. Pretty soon, you're going to have one of your councilmen going to be 70 years old. So I'm asking that maybe you might take on consideration. Now, give it HRT. If a person's 70 years old and over, let them ride the bus free. You can do that. You got the money to do it. So let's, you can't be do that. Anyway, the second thing I got here is a senior citizen. Now, with that three cent raise, a lot of senior citizens ain't making it. Because I know, because I'm out here with them. I can make it, because you haven't hurt me yet with my Jack Daniel when you hurt me there, and I ain't going back to Hawaii like this. So don't raise my tax. I know you sell all these investments, but somebody going to pay for it. Don't raise our taxes no more, because we can't afford it now. A lot of old people can't afford it. You got them now going to Goodwill? You got them going to Dollar Journal? They can't go to J.C. Penney's and Macy's no more. They can't go to Kroger's? They can't go to Food Lion? They better go to Save-A-Lot. That three cent tax have hurt them. They didn't believe me when I told them. My next-door neighbor, when he found out, the day, October, he got a ped, he almost went sky-high. But I'll help him with some food and help him. But it's a shame to see these senior citizens leaving these churches, wagging this food home, walk about three or four steps and then stop. Now, I look at it like this. These church vans, they can go get you on Wednesday night and Sunday, get that doll and bring you to church. How come that same van go back and sit in that parking lot all the week and ride away? Why can't it take these senior citizens to the doctor? Take them shopping? Not let them sit there? They bought those vans. Look, let's utilize them. Churches, don't get mad with me, but do some good for them. Because a lot of senior citizens are really hurting in this city. You need to get out and get with them, talk with them, you'll find this out. But anyway, the police force, you're doing a good job. I don't care who cut you down or what they say. They better be glad it ain't, um, Sherri Watson that you were talking about his people like that, because it'd be shame on you. But anyway, let's stop cutting one another down. If any citizen come up here, be disrespectful, then don't let us speak for four months. Anybody on the council be disrespectful to one another, then fine him $1,000. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Sergeant Major. Rarely do I respond when you speak, sir. I respect you a great deal. You've served our country well, and you're a great citizen. It does bother me when you come up and make these blanket accusations about our churches and about people not giving. I just attended last week the State of the Region. I want you to hear this, Sergeant Major. All right, Dr. Jim Cook, who is president emeritus of Old Dominion University for the last 16 years, has been doing an economic impact analysis of this region, and he gets into different categories. The City of Portsmouth, out of all 16 jurisdictions, are the most giving city. We are the poorest city, but we're the most giving city. We step up and we help. That's our civic leagues, our churches, our schools. And it really bothers me, sir, when you make those kind of comments. I'll let you respond, because as a policy, when one of us speak, we allow that. But that was recognized, and it was stated last week at the Marriott, where there was about four or 5,000 people. It was also stated in Hampton at the Convention Center. This is, this is region-wide, Sergeant Major, and you're talking about 97,000 people that you can't hear and get any good press out anywhere. These are the most given people in the region. Whether we have or don't, we will help other people. Everybody to a man in this city does that. So I take issue, sir, when you come up and make those kind of statements, and there are people talking about what we're doing throughout this region. Now, sir, the floor is yours.
I didn't say we are not a giving city. I said they need to take the buses, the buses and the vans they have, and take the senior citizen to the doctor or either shop. I didn't say you weren't giving them anything.
How do you know they're not doing that? Have you gone to all 300 churches? Have you gone to Bishop's Church and surveyed what he's doing during the week? Have you gone to Dr. Whittaker's church? Have you done that type of analysis, sir? To stand up in front of the public and make that kind of statement?
Well, if they're doing it, then the churches that's not doing it, why don't they join if I said they let them join to help do that?
Okay, thank you.
And by the way, since this is council, I be counsel twice. And Agent Orange lost part of my lung from Vietnam, and then the war at Camp Lejeune. But I wanted to say to all the Breck Council people in October, this is a nice thing, and I hope we all support it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good night.
Ms. Ursula Murphy?
Good evening. My name is Ursula Murphy, and I live at Elmhurst Lane in Portsmouth, Virginia. I want to say, yes, we are a giving city, and the recognition that Mr. Cherry mentioned is wonderful. Those are the things that we need to be seeing in this city, and we need to be hearing. I love the initiatives, the sharing with the citizens, what we, what we want to hear. You know, that's what we, we want to know where we stand on projects. We want to know where the city stands on our schools, and on what's going on in our schools. And Wilson High School, yeah. I'm not a graduate of Wilson High School. I am a Mustang, and that's okay too. But, you know, it's commendable. And yeah, girl power. That's what it's all about. You want a job done right, give it to a woman. That's all there is to it. And we do know how to balance a checkbook. So I love Portsmouth, and that's what it's all about. So thank you.
Thank you. Let me just say, Ms. Murphy, thank you for what you do with our homeless brothers and sisters during our winter shelter months and the things that we do there. When Dr. Cook mentioned that, I mean, that was the first thing that came to my mind of all of our churches and PVH and all of those folks coming together. Now, you actually serve on the board of PVH, correct?
That's correct.
Coming together, doing things like that, making a big difference in our community. So thank you for what you do as well.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Mr. Meeks?
Ms. Murphy? Where did you get that shirt?
Okay, I'm going to give them a plug. It's Larry Jones, and he's on the I Love Portsmouth Facebook page. So I've got a kind of little running list here tonight. I have a white one, but I really like the dark blue one. And yeah, so send me a message. I'll put you in touch with them.
Thank you. Very good. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mark Godalde Kietrowski?
Happy birthday, Ms. Ursula Murphy. To think that a citizen would come here for her birthday. Wow, that's dedication. Members of council, Mr. Mayor, I want to express my concern about the bad press you've been receiving, those of you who have declined to speak with the Virginian Pilot Reporter. This is a matter of concern to me because whatever the press does, the press is still a conduit of information to the public. And I can understand why you would not want to speak with particular reporters across the media, but it's a bad policy. The information that they seek does sell papers, does sell soap on the TV channels, does sell cat litter, what have you. Nonetheless, there is a responsibility for public officials to inform the public through media outlets or by some other means. If you get an inquiry from the press and you are not willing to have your message filtered, which the press does, then you have a responsibility to produce a news release. We have those facilities within the city. We have CCTV. We have a website. Use them. If there is an issue that needs to be addressed to the community, use the city's facilities to make that information available to the public. It's wonderful that you took time at tonight's meeting to put out some information that the public needs to have about where we are in economic development. about where we are in economic development. Do more of it. This meeting is a media outlet as well as a business meeting. So avail yourself of the communication facilities we have as a city to get the word out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And, and that's what we intend to do, uh, Mark. I mean, it is, it is important that we educate our public and let them know what we're doing here. And it is hard. We have no beef, no war with the paper, and you can come back if you want, or with the, with the television. But it is just troubling to hear and see these stories misrepresented and misreported. And I'll give you a prime example. Last week, the city of Norfolk just hired a, a new superintendent, a woman that's highly skilled, have been successful in everywhere she's been. And the first thing on the headline of the paper was some negative something that happened in our school district in Worcester, Massachusetts, and something that happened here. And you take this woman's lifelong passion of educating and what she did, and if you read that article, I mean, it just tore her apart. And it bothered me that that newspaper would do right out of the block, right out of the block, with this woman. And, and look at her bio. Look at the things she's accomplished and what she's been able to do in these urban settings. And to see that article written the way it was, and the way they tore down that, that new superintendent, it really does trouble not only myself, but other people. And last week, the city of Virginia Beach Finance Department had to put out a two-page letter to tell the citizens what the newspaper did not say. They had a reporter sitting in the meeting, and, and that reporter came out, and all they wanted to write was a negative article about the light rail being extended and the cost, and misrepresented all of the financial numbers. And they had, the, the Director of Finance in Virginia Beach had to put out a two-page letter saying what we really said versus what was reported. Do you really think we all have time to keep doing that? Or do we use our own media to tell our story? Because it's, it, it really is troubling to see and hear that. And I just felt so, so, so badly for that new superintendent over in Norfolk, because of what she's got to face and the challenges that she has. The last thing she needed was a negative article like that first day on the job. But we hear you, sir, and we're working in that direction. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Tony Goodwin?
Did you eat that? My God, they ate that woman alive. It was horrible.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Dr. Patton as well. My name is Tony Goodwin, representing the Old Town Business Association this evening. And as, it's that time of year again.
That's right.
The weather's getting cool, the, the trees are starting to shed their leaves, um, and, uh, things are starting to, to feel like fall. Um, so it's safe trick-or-treat time. And coming up on October the twenty-fourth, we welcome and put the welcome mat for everyone in our city, most importantly, our children at our schools, uh, age twelve and under, uh, to come downtown with their parents, with their grandparents, and enjoy a wonderful evening along High Street in conjunction with, of course, the Museum Madness, uh, uh, programs that the city museums are doing, uh, starting as early as ten o'clock that morning. Um, and then during the day, some of the environmental entertainers, we like to call them, is, is starting to come out of the woodwork and, and enjoy, um, the, the area. In fact, last year, um, we had a gentleman who travels the circuit throughout the United States, actually from Southern California, became the Tree Man, uh, the Walking Tree of Life. And I believe we got a good shot of you, Mayor, and also some of our police officers. But most importantly, it's a safe environment for the kids, uh, with the help of our Police Department, uh, our Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, first responders. This is a great opportunity for them to shine and, and, and have an impact on, on the children, to know that, you know, a police officer i- is, is a person, is a friend of theirs, and they need to know that they are, they are there to help at any ti- any time, especially, uh, in, in times of crisis. But at the same time, our Fire Department and our Sheriff's Department are also there a- as, as citizens of our community. And so we want that, that moment to shine as well. And we're happy to, to ho- host this event and be a partner with the city, and, and making this a, a spectacular evening for, for everyone to be proud of. Uh, people have, uh, for the last few years, have gone away with a very, very good feel-good moment, um, knowing that, that they can come down and enjoy themselves and, and not have to worry about, um, a lot of unsafe, uh, unsafe areas in, in, in the world, not only here in Portsmouth, but be there and know that they are safe, secure, and, um, and, and the time is, is good for them. So, thank you for this opportunity to talk about it. Again, safe trick-or-treat, October the twenty-fourth. There'll be postcards with the help of, uh, Dr. Patton's office getting out to our students, um, sent out, and also through, uh, marketing and events and tourism as well. And, um, and again, Museum Madness that morning, safe trick-or-treat that evening. And, uh, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak this evening to you.
Thank you. Let me ask you real quick, Tony, uh, what was the count last year? Number of participants? Do we, about six or seven thousand?
You know, there's, there's three ways to count cra- crowds. And that is aerial, and then there's, you know, you kind of calculate per square foot. And then there's other ways, but it's not so pretty of a me- but we don't provide potties at this event, so we can't count them that way. Um, but we, we would say anywhere between seven to eight thousand on, on a, on a, on a scale. And that's including parents as well. Parents, grandparents, and we want them to be engaged. So that's part of the reason why we added the entertainment component. Because before, it was just, come down, get free candy and go home. Now it's, now it has the entertainment value. It has the walking tree of life.
What do we have last year? We had Michael Jackson?
We have the Michael Jackson, uh, Thriller flash mob, which will be back again this year. We have the Walking Tree of Life, who's gonna tell stories, uh, as early as three o'clock. Um, the, the Museum Madness has, uh, Crindel the Magician, who is also gonna be performing inside of the, uh, museum.
Okay.
Uh, a couple of shows there. Um, word is on the street. We have a, we have a police officer that, um, has yet to be inducted as a police officer in the Portsmouth Police Department. But I understand he's going to, uh, uh, have a little fun down there that evening as well. And, um, and you might actually see Star Wars start early here this year, for whatever reason, so... Um, but it is coming in December to the Commodore, and, and, uh, we're, we're, we're glad to know that they're gonna actually visit Portsmouth first.
Alright, great job. Vice Mayor?
This is your time to shine. Would you tell us exactly the times and the place?
The time and place, High Street, from Crawford to, um, to Green Street, will be, uh, will be actually closed down to traffic somewhere between four-thirty, five o'clock. And the, the official start time is right around six o'clock for all the candy giveaways. But, uh, but we're, we're, uh, until eight o'clock. Once eight o'clock hits, the streets are clear, the businesses are open and ready to, you know, serve dinner that evening too, so... Um, but we, we don't, we don't push everybody off of High Street as far as parked cars are concerned. The traffic just stops traveling, so it will be a very safe, safe environment. And they can, you know, if they get in their cars during the event, they can pull off it to the next intersection and, and get out. But the police are there, uh, Sheriff's Department's there to ha- handle that, that movement. And again, just to make it safe, because we're gonna have a lot of kids down there in costumes. You know, the goblins and the witches and the fairies and the superheroes all down there. And it's, and truly, it's, I think, a, a show of, uh, a traveling show of, of costumes that everybody enjoys just seeing them walk by the, some of the patios on, on the High Street.
Dr. Patton?
Uh, Mayor wanted to call, Mr. Goodwin to call to our attention in talking today. I thought I had my, uh, microphone on. Uh, with, um, talking with Mr. Goodwin today, he is placing candy boxes across the city. There is a candy box that's on the first full of City Hall, which we're asking people to donate bags of candy, because you need lots and lots of candy for Halloween for children. He's gonna place some in our library, so we're encouraging the public to please just drop a bag of candy in one of the boxes across the city.
Very good. Thank you.
Definitely. All helps. Uh, you know, we, we purchase about four thousand pounds, and then we add to it. So thank you very much for that contribution.
Thank you, sir. Good night.
Thank you.
Ms. Donna Sae?
Good evening. My name is Donna Sae, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. In the Virginia Constitution Declaration of Rights in Article One, it reads that the Declaration of Rights is made by the good people of Virginia to exercise their sovereign powers, and these rights pertain to them and their posterity as the basis and foundation of government. In Section Three, it reads that government is instituted for the common benefit, protection, and security of the people, and of all the forms of government that is best produces the greatest degree of happiness and safety, and is most thoroughly secured against the dangers of maladministration. And that, whenever any government shall be found inadequate or contrary to these purposes, a majority of the community has unquestionable right, and a right that is not transferable to anyone else, and a right that no one can make void to reform, alter, or abolish that government in such manner as shall be judged most conducive to the public will. In other words, we, the people, are given our rights by God, not the government. And our rights are not transferable to those we elect. The Portsmouth City Government is instituted for the common benefit, protection, and security of the people in our community. Our form of government needs to produce the greatest degree of happiness and safety and prevent the dangers of maladministration. We, the people, do not have security from maladministration by our elected representatives. Why? Because the council representatives have no assigned duties in the charter. As liaisons to various boards and commissions, they aren't giving us any reports. The behavioral health doesn't have a liaison on its board, and they just got an award for money we know nothing about. The mayor has four assigned duties in the charter, to preside over the meetings of the city council, which includes the same right to vote and speak as the other members. His role is to maintain order, to follow all protocol and procedures for ceremonies. He is the head under the governor for the purpose of military law, such as in time of war, national emergency, riot or insurrection, or other emergency threatening the safety of life or property within the city. And four, he is the head of civil process. When there is a lawsuit involved in the city, the mayor receives the notice for the initial legal action. To carry out the mayor's role, he and others elected need to be well-versed in parliamentary procedures, mediation and negotiation skills. Because the elected are lacking these skills, cooperation is absent, and in its place, we have maladministration. As a result, our rights are being violated. We have no leadership. We are living in fear for our lives, and our city is financially bankrupt. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Sae?
Mr. Stephen Hoag?
My name is Stephen Robert Hoag. I would like to address the racist and sexist program in Portsmouth entitled the Minority and Women's Business Entrepreneur Program. First off, I would like to point out the ridiculous irony in the name of this program. In the city of Portsmouth, fifty-three percent of the population is African-American, and fifty-two percent of the population is women. The minority in Portsmouth actually happens to be white males. White males make up about twenty percent of the population. So this is not about helping minorities, but rather for punishing a particular section of the population for being successful. It is about socialists on the city council wanting to redistribute wealth. The idea that white people are more successful in Portsmouth because of past oppression of black people is fallacious. In nineteen sixty, that would have been a true statement, but in two thousand fifteen, it is not. It does not take into account the fact that Asian people, who were discriminated against very harshly, and even put in concentration camps during World War II, are economically more successful per capita than white people. It does not take into account the high percentage of negative choices in African-American communities, such as having a high percentage of single-family households and negative performance in education. There has never been a biracial society in human history in which the economic success of both races has been identical. And there never will be short of complete communism. I would like to quote, quote the Supreme Court decision, Plessy versus Ferguson. This was the judicial decision that the Supreme Court upheld the concept of separate but equal, or segregation. In other words, this decision allowed for making a legalized distinction of people based on race. However, there was one justice who dissented. Ironically, he was a former slave owner, which goes to show you can't always judge a person based on stereotypes. This man's name was Justice Harlan. Justice Harlan stated, quote, "Our constitution is colorblind. The law regards man as man and takes no account of his surroundings or his color," unquote. The majority of this city council, by allowing this program, takes the position of the segregationists in making a distinction based on race. I, however, stand with Justice Harlan in opposition. Any African-American in this audience who is over the age of sixty, who personally went through the horrible discrimination in this country, ought to be standing up in protest against the mere suggestion that such a racial distinction under the law would be taking place in this city. I ha- I will leave you with a quote from Frederick Douglass. He states, quote, "If there is one Christian principle more firmly fixed in our heart than another, it is this, that it is wrong to do evil, that good may come. And if there is one heresy more to be guarded against than another, it is the doctrine that the ends justify the means," unquote. I want black people and women in Portsmouth to be more prosperous, but I am not willing to achieve that end by discriminating against others based on race or sex. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, sir. Good night.
Ms., excuse me, Dr. Vernon Crump?
Counsel, uh, Mayor Wright, uh, City Manager. My name is Vernon Crump. Uh, I live at forty-seven thirty-two Mallet Crescent. I normally don't introduce myself with a title, but there is more than one Vernon Crump here. Mayor Wright, I came here tonight, uh, really to, uh, express my support and commend this council for the progress that I see going on in the city of Portsmouth. Uh, three weeks ago, I believe it was, I wrote a letter to the editor of our local paper. Uh, and in that letter to the editor, I said to him, uh, maybe if they shared some positive information about what's going on in the city, maybe you would want to talk to, with them more. Maybe you would return their call. Uh, they didn't print it on the editorial page, but they did put it in the carons. Uh, and, uh, I, I left out one line, and I want to share that tonight. What you're saying about the media is very true. Because what I said in that letter is there's an obvious bias going on. My experience dealing with public relations over the years lets me know when there is a bias going on with the media. Uh, I left out the part where I mentioned that they didn't, uh, even give our city manager time to unpack before they were coming on, down on her with something negative. I just think that when, when the media gets a whiff of something, they won't let it go. They're like sharks in the water. And they continue to beat, drum, uh, drumming up negativity everywhere they can, from anybody they can get it from. And with speakers like I just heard, I understand why. I'm, I'm wanting to encourage you all to continue to do what you're doing. I know they call you the Four Horsemen, uh, but it ought to be six stallions and a mayor supporting, uh, the efforts to keep this city progressing. I'm gonna leave you with this final thought. May you have the hindsight to know where you've been. May you have the foresight to know where you're going. And may you have the insight to know when you've gone too far. Keep pressing on.
Thank you, Doctor Crump.
Mr. Brian Scannell? Did I say that?
Good evening. How are we doing tonight?
Good evening, sir.
I hope I have some good news for you. Uh, it might alleviate some of the tension from, uh, Speaker or two ago. Uh, you may recall that when you added the, uh, accepting of the disparity report to the agenda, I, I came up real quick and just asked that we could post it up on the website, and you did. Thank you very much. Uh, I read through it, every single page, and, uh, did a little analysis. You had a chart in your hand there. Uh, let me start with a quick excerpt. Purchasing administration- Purchasing administrator shall establish a program consistent with this article to facilitate the participation of small business, and businesses owned by women and minorities in procurement transactions. Such programs shall be in writing and may include cooperation with the Commonwealth of the United States of America and other public and private agencies. Such programs shall include procedures to solicit contracts from the list of businesses provided by the Office of Minority Business Enterprise. This is an excerpt from the Portsmouth, Virginia procurement code. It was written in 1973. It has been in the code for the last 43 years. It is Section 12, 176, if you want to go look it up. So the good news is, if you look at the charts in front of you, the disparity study, although misleading in the executive summary, where we chose to isolate the construction area which showed the disparity, which only made sense, we paid them $65,000 to find disparity, and they did that. But when you look at the entire study and all the areas that they checked, you'll see there's not really a disparity in our contracting, at least not with white males. They're right in the middle of what they call the usage range, which, on the chart for everybody, the usage range is between 80 and 100%. White males fall right in there. Hispanics and female-owned white businesses fall about half below that, just over 40. And Asians fall just barely under that in the 70s. However, what we did discover is African-Americans are contracted at a rate three and a half times the acceptable band in Portsmouth. That's this long blue line that I actually had to add a whole other half to the chart for. So the good news is, we are contracting minorities, and Portsmouth is doing a very good job of that. The code has existed for 43 years, and we should probably celebrate the fact that we are doing a good job of contracting minorities. And there's no need for us to contract an outside agency at a cost of $100,000 in taxpayer money every year to implement a policy we do not need. If you have any questions, I'm...
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whittaker?
Yes, I just want to, you can have your seat.
Okay.
I understand clear when Dr. King said that sincere ignorance and conscientious stupidity are two of the most dangerous things in the world. And I think that we've heard from two speakers that support that. And for you to stand before us as if you have some type of expertise, which neither of you have, and to suggest what you have falls between sincere ignorance and conscientious stupidity.
Mayor, since I've just been called stupid and ignorant, am I allowed to respond?
You can respond, sir.
Thank you. This is not really an area of expertise. This is simple mathematics. If you read the entire study...
I agree, it is simple.
You would see that the numbers are correct. You're more than welcome to check them. You're more than welcome to contact me and ask me about it. But it is the numbers out of the study. They are, in fact, accurate. There's just no way around math. It's a simple averaging system, and it is the way it is. I thought we would be happy that we're doing a good job of that and following the code that was put in place 43 years ago and eliminating the need for an additional expense, but I guess maybe we're not happy about that.
Thank you, sir. Good night. Thank you. Ben, no further business. Stand adjourned. Thank you.